Good evening and welcome to the District 128 Regular Board Meeting of August 25, 2025. We'll start with a Pledge of Allegiance if you would join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic with its hands, one nation, united in the world, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Carol, can we have a roll call, please?
Nina Austin.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Raul Deschmuck.
Here.
Doug Fleagle.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Middleish Cotwell.
Here.
Wes Poland.
Okay, well note that all seven board members are with us this evening. I'm going to do a quick review of the agenda. We have some communications items, invitation for public comment, education support professional report. We welcome our new student school board representatives. They will be given the oath of office and then they will provide us with some reports on the beginning of school in their two buildings. We have some FOIA requests and a superintendent report. That'll be followed by the consent vote agenda, all items that have been discussed earlier in the month in committee meetings and/or our regular items that appear each month on the board agenda. We have some action items, some board policies for a second reading and adoption, memorandum of agreement with the ESP job categories and positions. We have an amendment for the administrator contracts, employment of employees, D128 daring ed tour to approve, an amended athletic training agreement, approval for bid for peers, helical peers, is that right, for the LHS cafeteria. We do have a couple informational items, one about Vernon Hills Safe Routes Grant and a website update. Give the opportunity for board members for comments and events that they've attended in the last month. I have nothing from IASB, anything from CEDOL? Okay, and then we'll talk about future agenda items briefly. We will have an executive session. When we return out of that executive session, there will be no action items taken. So, okay, we'll start. Communications, invitation for public comment. We have four people signed up. Just a reminder, following our board policy of three-minute time limit per speaker, and appreciate you sticking to that. We start with Kurt Hinsberger. Okay, okay, then Marnie Navarro.
Good evening. I am Marnie Navarro. Is the microphone on?
Yes.
A District 128 taxpayer lawyer and incoming parent, I speak for myself. On August 29, 2024, a couple weeks into the school year, an 18-year-old adult male student walked into the Libertyville High School girls locker room unannounced and with no warning to the parents or girls, and began to change and observe numerous minor girls undressing and changing. The adult man was dressed as a male, looked like a male with facial hair. The girls had only known him as a male since junior high and presented as a male even earlier that day. Understandably, the girls were shocked, embarrassed, and scared. Further victimizing the girls was this administration's handling of the incident. Several of the girls and their parents went and spoke to the administration only to be told that the girls were the problem, and if the girls had an issue, they had to move to an alternate location. Both Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills have gender-neutral facilities, but apparently the adult man declined them and conveniently identified as a female when the opportunity arose to see minor girls indisposed. One year later, and weeks into the new school year, District 128's gender support guidelines remain unchanged and in flagrant violation of federal law. District 128 expressly permits males in girls bathrooms, locker rooms, and sports, prescribes forced use of preferred pronouns, allows the district to gender transition, no medical exam required, a student without parental knowledge or consent, and expressly includes gender identity in its curriculum. Under the policy, anyone at any time can access our girls' private spaces, whatever could go wrong. Look to the recent sexual assault in a girls' locker room in Kenosha and rape in Virginia as to what can happen when biological males are permitted unfettered access to our females' private spaces. This notwithstanding the Cardona decision, which struck down nationally, the Biden administration's unlawful extension of Title IX to include gender identity, and Trump's 12025 executive order. There is no ambiguity here. District 128 is in daily violation of federal law and risks loss of our 1.7 million federal funding dollars, federal prosecution, civil lawsuits, and yet more costly attorney's fees. Look at the federal civil complaints pending against Deerfield, Naperville, Bolingbrook, Barrington, Schaumburg, CPS, and ISBE for a preview of what's coming. District 128's response is that it is following ISBE guidance. ISBE guidance is not the law. It is non-controlling guidance from a partisan state administrative agency. Title IX is federal law. It is controlling. It is Law School 101 that federal law supersedes state law under the federal supremacy clause. The U.S. Department of Education just last week pulled federal funding from five Virginia schools for refusing to comply with Title IX. Two weeks ago, a man was arrested for exposing himself in front of Highland Middle School and charged with indecent exposure within 500 feet. I'm almost done, Jim. Please turn that off. Thank you. I'm literally a sentence. Two weeks ago, a man was arrested for exposing himself in front of Highland Middle School and charged with indecent exposure within 500 feet of a secondary school, a felony offense. Yet the same thing happened and was permitted to continue for weeks inside Libertyville High School. We parents will not sacrifice our daughters at the altar of Pritzker's radical gender ideology. We call upon this newly elected board to act. It takes four of seven of you to vote to protect our 1,580 girls and our district's dollars and follow federal law. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Socrates?
Starting now? Is it on?
Yep.
It's on, right?
Yep.
Okay. So first of all, I'd like to say congratulations to the newly elected board members and principal, Dr. Young. Good luck. And good luck to the new board members. And some of you know the history of what's going on here. I've been coming up to this podium during the pandemic, which I think, well, it's a fact that it was mishandled. And I think we're entering another topic that seems like it's gonna be mishandled. And I was one of those people for the pandemic that I ended up being kind of, I told you so. It would be nice to start the school year without any of this noise or distractions. Two years ago, maybe three years ago, I asked for panic buttons in the female bathrooms or female spaces to try to avoid something similar to what Marnie just pointed out. Then later, I find out there's gender-neutral bathrooms in the female bathrooms. I think those were probably built into the building as ADA-compliant bathrooms. I don't think that's proper to have those bathrooms inside the female bathroom spaces. I'd like to share a little bit about my opt-out experience. I have to say thank you to Dr. Young and the building staff. I also believe that I think most people in the buildings are great people. A testament of that is my kids coming home. But I do believe that there's some issues in the district office, and welcome Dr. Schaefer. Good luck. Hopefully, we can all work together. But my opt-out experience at the end was to our satisfaction, but it wasn't really that straightforward. My wife went out of her way to do certified mail and everything, but then there was another form that D128 makes people fill out. It wasn't that difficult to fill out, but it was just extra steps. All in all, it took about maybe three to four hours of our time to make sure that things were clear and that our daughter was not going to be exposed to any ideology that we don't agree upon. I believe anyone pushing LGBTQ+ agenda onto minors are groomers. That's how I feel. This stuff should be covered at home by the parents, and anyone teaching my kid who they should be allies with is inappropriate. And if your kid leaves the house and somebody, an adult, a stranger, or a teacher has to teach your child who they should be allies with, then you have bigger problems at home. Thank you for your time, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Marsha McClure?
Good evening. I'm Marsha McClary. I'm a chapter leader of Moms for Liberty here in Lake County, Illinois. I'm here to address the safety and fairness issues with the D128 policies. I believe that after talking to hundreds of staff and educators across the state of Illinois, that most of you want to do the right thing, and you are up against some very difficult state policies. So I do appreciate that situation. But I will say that California and a lot of districts are ruling and changing their policies to address the fairness and safety of your students, and I encourage you to do the same thing. D128's gender support plan and guidelines remain in violation of federal law, whereas federal law supersedes state law on the supremacy clause. So talk to your lawyers about that, including Title IX violations allowing biological males in female bathrooms and locker rooms and sports, expressly including gender identity and curriculum, and inconsistent, at best, parental notification and opt-out processes I've been made aware of by several members in your district. And permitting D128 to heighten students' transition from parents, which is really not partnering with the parents on education, as I believe most of you would like to do, and I think makes sense. These policies resulted in an alleged 18-year-old man disrobing and watching girls change as a result of the policies, and at any time and any moment, this could happen in your schools, and it is a big liability to you. So please consider that. Some of the excerpts from your gender plans and support plans are as follows. Gender support plan includes a plan for supporting students' access to facilities and school sponsor programs consistent with the identity of the student. This may include, not a limited to, gender restrooms, locker rooms, fine and performing arts programs, and athletic performance programs. Schools must allow students to use gendered facilities and have access that are consistent with their gender support plans. Gender expansive students have the right to be addressed by name and pronoun corresponding to identity they exclusively and consistently assert at the school. There is nothing in these policies that say that the parents need to be notified or consulted on this specifically. That is very, very concerning to me as a parental rights advocate, and I believe that most of your parents would be very alarmed at this type of situation. The issue with sports has even reached the U.S. Olympic Committee, who recently codified competition to be based on biological sex for fairness and safety reasons. Don't D128 athletes and those competitive schools deserve the same fairness as elite athletes of the Olympics? I believe so. What about the other schools you're competing with and those athletes that show up here and aren't happy that your policy allows males to compete against females and vice versa? This isn't about exclusion. It's about fairness, safety, and respect. Kern County Board of Education, I'd ask you to reference, in California just made the right choice for their students, as you should bravely as well. If these policies are not remedied, I encourage parents of these conditions to procure legal remedies. Thank you so much, and please do the right thing for your students.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? That's all we have on the list, if you'd like to come up, state your name.
Good evening, everyone. Michael Shanks. Sorry, I'm not on the list. I know tonight you guys are gonna be talking about at Vernon Hills High School, the athletic trainer situation that it seems that Athletico can't provide to full-time equivalents anymore. And I know you're gonna be discussing that. As a parent of athletes over the years, it'd be great to maybe possibly start looking at moving to an in-house on-staff trainer. When you have an in-house staff trainer, they take more ownership of the program. There's long lines at the end of the school day for kids either getting taped or getting treatments, and they're not getting full treatments. And unfortunately, with Athletico, they try to send a lot of those kids to Athletico to resume, but a lot of these kids and parents and families can't afford that. So looking into, and I think Libertyville has in-house athletic training, I'm not entirely sure, but an in-house athletic trainer program will do, in my opinion, do better for the athletes. They can come to their, they can come get modalities like STEM or ultrasound or other treatments throughout the day versus the end of the day. High schools our size, even smaller, all have, many of them have in-house programs. So I would like, I encourage you guys to take a look at that. I know it's a cost-benefit related issue. I do get concerned with Athletico not being able to provide what they were providing with, too. And the trainers were great. They've treated my children very well who've gone through injuries. But please take a look at trying to, I think you guys are in contract through the next year, but take a look at the future for the athletic training program. It'd be great for the kids. The goal is to treat them, get them better. Like I said, a lot of these kids can't go to outside services and receive physical training, so they do count on what happens inside the school. And there's many kids who have study halls or lunches that they would be more than willing to go earlier in the day to get their treatment done instead of missing practice or meetings or games at the end of the day. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board? Okay, moving on, we have a education support professional report. Kurt, now you come up.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kurt Hinsberger. I am the Vice President of the D128 Educational Support Professional Union. We're looking forward to the 2026-25-2026 school year and continuing our collaboration with the board and the administration. Our members are looking forward to receiving information on the health savings account soon. This benefit to offset the costs of health insurance, it's greatly appreciated from us, really. But some of our groups, some of the people in our group are delaying their care in anticipation for those funds to come in, so I hope that gets sorted out soon. Our executive board is looking forward to continued work with Larry Varn and to further develop our ESP-specific professional education opportunities for the institute days we have, so that it targets more the ESP during that day. We also look forward to continuing conversations around the Grow Your Own program, wherein we assist our ESP in getting their advanced degrees. We really appreciate that. And then also looking forward to finalizing those job descriptions that we developed during '24-'25, and getting to know the new school board members and who we are on the exec board. So thanks and welcome, guys.
Thank you, Kurt. Okay, one of the more exciting parts of tonight is administering the Student School Board Representative Oath of Office. So you all should have a copy of this. So, do we stand? Probably standing. And then you can recite this all together? I'll start us out. As a representative.
To the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility to represent the student body so that the Board of Education can make decisions that support the equitable and quality education of every student at D128, foster meaningful communication between students, administrators, and the Board of Education, and ensure a variety of student voices and perspectives are shared at the board table. Attend monthly Board of Education meetings and present relevant and timely reports in coordination with my fellow student board representatives, review the board meeting agenda prior to the meeting to ask clarifying questions in advance, and bring relevant comments to the table related to the scheduled discussions. Report ideas that reflect the students of my school and not personal agendas. Be available to hear the ideas and questions from students at my school and relay them to the board when needed. Work closely with our principals to ensure student voice assists the superintendent and members of the Board of Education in leading the district toward achieving the district's daring mission and strategic plan.
Great. Thank you and welcome officially. And so the next item on the agenda is the Student School Board Representative Report. So we'll just turn it over to you, and we'll figure out who goes first. Okay.
So I guess I can start. Hello, my name is Asher Mash, and I'm excited to be serving as one of the board reps this year. My reports will primarily be focused on student life and activities to bring up student experiences and feedback with clubs, extracurriculars, and school events. Students have been hard at work with planning school events. Drew Lanzione, a senior, talked about his experience at Senior Sunset, which he thought was a great way to kick off the year and reconnect with his peers. He also noted how excited students are for upcoming traditions like senior lip sync, where a diverse range of groups come together to compete. Furthermore, many of our academic career and cultural clubs are already beginning to organize and meet. I spoke with Mohit Sanukumar, who has been attending Computer Science Club's recent meetings. He shared that the club is working towards new goals, like introducing Vernon Hills to new national level coding competitions, and they're also expanding Girls Who Code and other equity-related programs, which encourage more inclusion in STEM fields and help younger students feel represented. Finally, I'd like to highlight Christine Lee, a violist in the Vernon Hills Symphony Orchestra. Christine shared how meaningful it has been to make music with her fellow musicians again. The orchestra is working hard towards their September concert, and she mentioned that rehearsals have been both challenging and motivating as students dedicate themselves to learning difficult pieces. She's also excited to get to know our new music teacher and band director, Ms. Gossler, and how she'll enhance our experience for students involved in the fine arts. Overall, while activities and school events have just begun, it's important and apparent how Vernon Hills High School's students thrive when there's a strong sense of community and a focus on student life. And because of this, a lot of students at Vernon Hills request more school-wide events and clearer communication on logistics. It is extremely important that we maintain a strong culture of activities and events. My goal is to work with the board this year to strengthen these opportunities and ensure that our district continues to grow and excel. Thank you so much.
Hello. My, okay, hello. My name is Anika Talati, and I'm so excited to serve as a student board representative. Thank you so much for this honor. My focus this year will be on the ways VHHS students impact the school and local community through volunteering, initiatives, and jobs, and how they have benefited from these experiences. To begin, the National Honor Society sponsor, Mrs. Garcia, shared what NHS students have done so far that is crucial to VHHS culture, such as supporting teams by working concessions and being freshman orientation leaders. Outside of school, Mrs. Garcia likes that a lot of the work NHS students do is people-facing, so that they get experience interacting with the community. Over the summer, volunteers placed flags on the grave sites of those who served in the military. Mrs. Garcia said that volunteering is a two-way street because people are always impressed by NHS volunteers, and the students themselves are eager to serve again because they felt valued from the experience. Another way VHHS students have taken steps to leave a positive impact is through kit outreach, a student-founded and student-run nonprofit whose mission is to end local hygiene poverty. Grace Doe, the Director of Media Management, shared that they have already donated more than 1,000 kits this year alone. Grace said that being on the executive board strengthened her cooperation skills and taught her the importance of online engagement. Finally, many VHHS students also took up summer jobs, as you may have heard, in various places, learning new skills and becoming active members of society in the process. One of these students was senior Lauren Kendrick, who shared that her summer job taught her how to advocate for herself and how to manage her money. After working, Lauren is now more compassionate to school staff. These chances for students to benefit others have impacted them very positively, enabling them to gain insights that will leave them more engaged citizens. For this reason, it would be highly beneficial to include a comprehensive and updated database of local opportunities for volunteering, jobs, and internships that are catered to high schoolers, that are easily accessible to them on the D128 website. Having this database would allow for more students to get these valuable experiences. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Olivia Bush, and I'm so honored to be serving as a student board representative this year. So thank you so much for welcoming me. This year, my focus will be on academic and athletic support and resources. To begin, I'd like to highlight Vernon Hills' outstanding peer tutoring program, formerly led by Dr. Young and now led by Ms. Garcia. In this program, students who excel in certain academic areas volunteer their time to support peers during free periods. This model has been especially effective because many students feel more comfortable seeking help from classmates. For example, senior Tessa Dubin shared with me that her consistent visits to the Ark have been invaluable, whether for reviewing material before tests or learning new study strategies from fellow students. Alongside academics, athletics play an important role in shaping our school experience. This year, we welcomed our new athletic director, Justin Cooper. Already, Mr. Cooper has made a strong impression on students by being present at practices, engaging with summer camp activities, and taking the time to connect with athletes. His efforts are helping to strengthen the relationship between students and administration by putting a face to the name and showing us that leadership is active and visible in our daily experiences. As seniors begin the college application season, many of us are feeling a wide range of emotions. Vernon Hills provides strong post-secondary support with a dedicated space and two counselors available to guide us. While these resources are incredibly valuable, some students have expressed that they would like to see the district place more emphasis on sharing the full range of post-high school pathways. Alongside four-year universities, students want more visibility around trades, vocational programs, military opportunities, gap years, and workforce preparation. This would ensure that all students, regardless of their path, feel fully informed and supported. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve and share these students' perspectives. I look forward to working with you all this year.
Hi all, I'm Andy Trobe, and I'm truly honored to serve as a student board representative this year. For a little bit about me, at Libertyville, I'm president of the debate team in the Jewish Culture Club, and I also help lead wellness and diversity initiatives. Outside of school, I'm active with Phila Heart for Kids in Lake Forest and in my local Jewish community, and I'm passionate about public service and community building. The start of the '25-'26 school year has been full of energy and excitement. As a senior, I kicked off the first day with a friendly shaving cream fight with my classmates off campus, which was a moment filled with laughter and school spirit that really set a positive tone for the year. Walking through the hallways, I've noticed a strong sense of community, whether it's peers forming new connections or students diving into exciting topics in class. The overwhelming excitement and enthusiasm that students, teachers, and administrators have shown proves that LHS has started the school year with a bang. I look forward to representing the student body and working alongside the board. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ava Gradator, and I'm so happy to have been chosen as a student board representative. A little bit about me is that I love A little bit about me is that I love theater. I've been stage managing at LHS for four years. I am also the vice president of our Latin Club and an executive member of Stage Players, our drama club. I also participate in the Interact Volunteer Club at our school. And with the start of the new school year, LHS has been welcoming our new students with freshman orientation and Link Crew, our first semester orientation program. As a second-year Link Crew leader in these first weeks of school, the energy has been up and so has freshmen's participation in Link Crew. In my junior year, it was a struggle to get freshmen involved, but this year I have felt a real excitement and increased contribution to the program. I believe part of this reason is the new cell phone policy. With phones out of the way, I have really felt a positive turn in interactions and spirit inside and in the hallways of LHS. With the start of the school year, I am excited to see where this year goes, and I am excited to work with the school board to help our schools be the best they can be. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ruhi Patel, and I'm incredibly passionate about communication and equity, which is why I'm beyond excited to serve as a student board representative this year. I'm president of DECA, Libertyville's business club, and I'm also part of Senior Wellness Board and the Student Diversity Council. I run cross-country in the fall and play badminton in the spring, so I stay very busy at LHS. One of my favorite things about being involved at the school is seeing how events can bring people together and give everybody a voice. That's why I'm especially excited about Powderpuff, a senior homecoming tradition. Girls form flag football teams and boys step in as coaches and cheerleaders. It's such a fun event because it gives seniors the chance to bond during our last homecoming together. Sentiment was high at our senior class meeting, where we realized that we had only nine months left with the people we spent 12 years growing up with. And it was even crazier when we realized that Dr. Albin pointed out to us that the third and final time that we would all join together this year would be at graduation. That was met with energy and enthusiasm, and that's exactly what the senior class is going to bring to the school and the community. We are all beyond excited to serve as student board representatives this year. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to all six of you. It's very interesting to us and very helpful to us to hear your stories and your information that you bring to us from each of your buildings. It really helps, at least for me, it helps ground me and, you know, what's important, and that's your experience every day. So thank you for that. Moving on, next item on the agenda is the FOIA request. There's eight of those. You want to have any comments or questions about those? Pretty straightforward. I'll turn it over to Dr. Schaefer for the superintendent report.
Good evening. I will echo President Batson's comments. We had an opportunity to have lunch with these six incredible young people last week. We are very energized to be working with you this year. Welcome aboard. We can't wait to hear from you. So a couple of good news reports to share with the community. District 128 is once again proud to be ranked among the best high schools in the state and nation in the recently released U.S. News and World's report of best high school rankings for 2025-2026. Vernon Hills High School is ranked 11th and Libertyville High School 21st among Illinois high schools. So great accomplishment. We are super excited. Also, D128 was honored to receive the ASBO, or ASBO, International Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for fiscal year 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. The award is a testament to the district's commitment to transparency and high-quality financial reporting. Congratulations to our very own Assistant Superintendent Dan Stanley and the Business Department team for their work on this report.
Thank you. Dan's very humble. They always do a great job, Dan and his team. So thank you for that. Next on the agenda is the consent vote agenda. We need, anyone have anything that you wish to remove and discuss separately of this? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent vote agenda.
Motion to approve the consent vote agenda.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Carol.
Austin.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Deschmok.
Aye.
Fleagle.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next on the agenda is the board policies. There's a group of board policies for a second reading and adoption. Brian, do you have anything else you want to add to that? These have been reviewed and discussed in committee.
Nothing, we review these at PMP twice and the previous board meeting.
Yeah, okay. All right. Can we have a motion and a second to adopt these policies?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Deschmok.
Aye.
Fleagle.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next up is a memorandum of agreement for the ESP job category and positions. Brian, just a brief overview?
Sure. And we discussed this during our PMP committee meeting, that we've been in discussions with our Educational Support Professional Union regarding the job categories for some new and current positions. And so this memorandum of agreement will put those positions into the contract. And again, we're entering the second year of a three-year collective bargaining agreement with them.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, can we have a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement with the, for the ESP job category positions?
Hessel, so moved.
Poland, second.
Any questions or concerns? Okay, roll call, please.
Deschmok.
Aye.
Fleagle.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is administrator contract amendment. Back to you, Brian.
And again, we reviewed this at the PMP committee meeting, and after the approval of the Teacher Union Collective Bargaining Agreement, there are some benefits in the bargaining agreement that historically we have also extended to our administrators. In fact, there are some things that are, especially our 10-month administrators, in regards to their salary and some of their health benefits are based off of the bargaining agreement. So we are bringing for recommendation to have contract amendments for our 10- and 12-month administrators, and it's as presented.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve the 10- and 12-month administrator contract amendments as presented?
But also move.
Deschmok, second.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Fleagle.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Deschmok.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next on the agenda is employment of employees. These would be a few additional employee actions that were not available when we met earlier in the month, so these are on a separate item outside the consent vote. Do we have a motion to approve the employment items as presented?
Motion to accept, Fleagle.
Austin, second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Pretty straightforward. Roll call, please.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Deschmok.
Aye.
Fleagle.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next is the D128 Daring Ed Tour, Culture and College Ed Tour proposal. Tom, you have some information on this?
Yeah, like Olivia mentioned during her report, the students are hungry for different opportunities to learn about post-secondary options. This one is focused on colleges that are available to all D128 students, so it's a college tour and a culture tour, specifically learning about some very important historical sites in Washington, DC. There will be other tours, daring ed tours, being created and offered for students to learn about different career pathways and different types of gap year or sort of trade-related careers. But this is the first one we're offering. It's embedded in the larger context of our Exploring Multiple Paths. We have one-day opportunities for students to learn about different colleges. We bring college representatives in. We also have one-day career treks where we take students to different businesses in the area or bring different representatives from the trades or the military into the school. This is the first time we're doing a multi-day experience, and we look forward to building more of these opportunities around student interests in the future. We discussed this tour in particular at our PMP meeting. We heard feedback from our board that the committee who is working on the tour incorporated some adjustments to the agenda that was sent to you as an updated agenda, and we're looking for your approval so we can begin to promote this with students as early as tomorrow if approved.
Good. Thank you. Can we have a motion to approve the D128 Daring College and Culture Tour for October 2025?
Motion to approve the Daring Ed Tour.
Hessel, second.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I just have a comment, and I think first of all, thank you like for incorporating the communication plan. It's very much appreciated. Just one request as you plan the annual long-term strategies around educational tours, that you can provide this information to the families a little bit early on, so that would be very helpful for them to plan for the year as well. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, roll call, please, Carol.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Deschmok.
Aye.
Fleagle.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is the amendment for the athletic training agreement with Athletico. Dan, you have a few quick comments on this one?
Yeah, discussed in FNF. We have a contract that goes through the end of this year with Athletico. They contacted us and said they're having difficulty finding athletic trainers. It's a tough market right now, and so they felt they couldn't fulfill the full 40 hours and guarantee the second full 40 hours, but they feel very comfortable about filling 30, and they very likely will fill the 40 as much as they can. And so that's something that Justin would like to move forward with, and so I have no reason to recommend anything different. And it's something we'll watch the service over the next couple of months and see how things are going.
Okay. Can we have a motion to approve the amended athletic training agreement?
Poland, so moved.
Hessel, second.
Okay, any further questions or comments?
Again, just a comment based on what was just mentioned by one of the student parents who talked about it. I think as a contingency plan, it may not be a bad idea to explore the, specific word was in-house staff as a possibility, as a backup for such situations when we may not have adequate support of the professionals there. So just something to think about as a backup plan.
Anyone else? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Poland.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Deschmok.
Aye.
Fleagle.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda, last of the action items, is approval for a bid for helical piers for the LHS cafeteria. Dan, maybe a brief update on this one?
Yeah, so in the, in the, in the servery and in the courtyard, we have to dig down to put a foundation in so you can put the structure in. We had to dig down a lot deeper than anybody thought we had to do, and so the contract was not sufficient to pay the contractor to do all of the work that we needed to do. And so because we were at the, we were beyond the 10% threshold of that trade, we had to rebid that, that work as additional work. And so these are the results. We had two contractors. The low bid is the current contractor on site, Safeguard Waterproofing Ramjack, Illinois, was the low bid at $115,461.
Okay, thank you. Can we have a motion to approve the recommendation to award the bid for helical piers for the LHS cafeteria project to Safeguard Waterproofing Ramjack, Illinois, in the amount of $115,461?
Hessel, so moved.
Poland, second.
You're on the same path here. Any questions or comments? Okay, this was discussed also earlier in the, in the month, so can we have a roll call, please?
Austin.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Deschmok.
Aye.
Fleagle.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We have an information, a couple of informational items here. The first one is a grant in partnership with the Village of Vernon Hills. Dan, maybe you can give just a brief background on this?
Yeah, the village is pursuing a grant to put in crosswalks at the intersection Cougar Way and Fairway Drive, as well as Fairway Drive and Nike Parkway. And so they asked for our support, and so Dr. Schaefer was very quick to provide that support, so we have the copy of the letter. It's a project that's no cost, no cost to us, but we greatly appreciate the enhanced safety it'll bring. You know, Dr. Young was involved as well in terms of their reaching out, so we're really appreciative of this and more of like a, an FYI of what's going on, a really good partnership between the village and the district, and so we're excited to see this move forward.
Yeah, thank you. This was, we discussed this earlier as well, and I think it's a really good partnership as well, and this will benefit our students and the community in general. So we look forward to that ongoing work. Next item is the website restructure project. Mary?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate a couple minutes just to bring everyone up to speed on where we are with our website project. Just as a little brief background, we started the restructure back in spring of last school year, and the previous website was developed in 2017. And it's generally recommended that you refresh, do an update to your website every five years. So we were way past where we should have been doing a redesign, and we'd grown with a site that had several thousands of pages, many of which were outdated, underutilized. There was a lot of duplicate information, and it was inconsistently edited because we had a lot of people working on it, and it was increasingly non-ADA compliant, which was the whole reason we started in 2017 with our new site. So we, we worked with the new site with the guiding principles of we were going to follow industry best practices, we were going to get input from our users, and we were going to look at our website analytics, both before we started as well as into the project. So the benefits of the new website structure, which is with Final Site, is that we have eliminated a lot of the clutter. We've streamlined the navigation. There is mobile-friendly equitable experiences for everyone, which just it's, no matter what device you're looking on, it complies with that. There's less pages and media, which means that you'll have a faster loading experience, especially if you're using it on a mobile device. There's consistency across the schools, so the, the fine arts at one building has the same structure and content as the fine arts at the other building, even though they have their own unique activities going on. There's improved equity and representation for all of the individual sports and the clubs. And again, there's enhanced accessibility monitoring with the new system that is built into the Final Site platform. A little look at the profile of our website visitors. We did some back work on who has been visiting, and we did our, our soft launch during spring break of last year and then communicated that it would be more robust at the start of the school year. So in the first month, starting in mid-July, we had about 3.4K visitors to the website. We did post a feedback form so that anybody that's using it can give us feedback. We've had less than 1% of those visitors give us some feedback, so that could be for various reasons. Maybe they're happy, maybe they're just busy and don't have time to do that, but we really hope that people will continue to give us feedback. And we did find that 50%, 56% of the people that are visiting the site are doing it on a mobile device. So our ongoing work, it's, you know, the website is never a final product. It's, it's an evolving, living platform that we're always going to be growing with. We are in the process of training additional staff members to edit their specific areas of the website, and we're also exploring some additional webmaster support that will help us keep up on all the changes. And again, we really, really encourage anyone to give us their feedback, if it, whether it's missing or outdated, or any suggestions. The information that's on the website, if you could click that link. This is the communications page of the website, and this will remain up there. But if you could close out of that X and then just scroll down, in the bottom of this page is the feedback form. So we would appreciate any feedback from any of our users.
Thank you, Mary. I also like the idea, at least for now, the pop-up box that was up there, that immediately, the first time you go to the site, it'll give you the opportunity to give feedback. So if you do have feedback, please, you know, provide that because it'll only improve if, you know, we get the proper feedback and understand where there might be something missing or a broken link or something to that effect. So I appreciate the work that, Mary, that you do and the team that's involved with this. It's a lot of work, so.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Just a comment again, Mary, thank you for this. I think one more thing that you can consider is the official emails and communication that go to the community. Maybe the signature section could specifically state that we are updating our websites. And if you have any feedback, please click this link as a signature. That makes it very easy for people to say, okay, let me do that if this is.
Thank you. That's a great idea.
Full disclosure, I actually didn't even realize that there was a link to provide feedback because every time I go to the site, I just automatically click the X because I'm usually in a hurry and I want to find information fast. So I just pulled it up. So I'm going to share the link so that, you know, maybe, I don't know if I'm the only one who's just been clicking the X to get rid of that pop-up. But thank you for pointing that out because I did not know that. I did not realize that.
And many also have pop-up blockers. I have one. I did not know that link existed.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you, Mary. Moving on, board comments and events. Anyone have an interesting board-related event or something that you want to report on?
Well, I can mention it now. I was going to mention during C-Daw, but the C-Daw is actually offering building tours during the board members. If you want to go, I'm actually going to go on September 23rd. If you want information, just let me know. But they're going to be giving a tour of the gauges, Lake Campus, on the 23rd. Interested, let me know.
On Friday, August 8th, I attended the all-staff welcome-back meeting, which was great. So thank you for the invitation, and I'm glad that I was able to be there. And then today, I received a tour of Libertyville High School from Dr. Albin, so thank you so much.
Great. Anybody else?
I would just like to personally welcome all of you to that board. It's great to have you here.
Okay, thank you. There's nothing for IASB, C-Daw. You mentioned your C-Daw comment. We have a list of future agenda items here in the agenda, so we will look forward to those next month. And so now we move on. We need a motion to convene a closed session to discuss the placement of individual students in special education programs and/or other matters relating to individual students. That's five ILCS 120/2C10. Yep.
Deschmok, so moved.
Fleegal.
Second.
Okay, we have a roll call, please?
Batson.
Aye.
Deschmok.
Aye.
Fleegal.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We will go into closed session. We will not have any action items afterwards, so, you know, feel free to stick around, but we'll just be adjourning when we come back out. So thank you very much, everybody, for attending, and good night.